And the Community Action Program operated by the mayor through the Department of Community Development. I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting ceremony during the 2022. This hearing is being conducted to determine service priorities for our neighborhood in connection with the federal community service block grant. And so we provide any progress funding. On the reverse side of the agenda that we have before you. So we entered into more detailed explanation of the NAB and also the community block grant committee. They do a advisory board for NAB. I have the authority and responsibility to set priorities for our communities, our areas. In forty-one different areas around the city, but we're one of forty-one. We're the only one from Staten Island. So primarily the offshore. It goes from where America Harbor all the way to the Marshall. So beautiful, where our community, where there are people who can talk. The lock and act was laid over there, where any sign is painted over there. People in our individual areas that are concerned with the new block grant. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleagues, one from the right-hand side. And Peter Lee C. Junior has been the former chair, now I'm the chair. And I'm just having everything that you did, including behind you. But very great, where we serve the state, the community, and for work.
Well, welcome everybody. A lot of you don't know about U S D B, they provide a lot of funding for sixty-four percent. We're rather wanting to get people over there to apply. So they do a lot of work that's really not praised and thanked enough. So without them, like you said, the area from Madison Harbor to Parkville, we not get funding for these. Thank you. We want to hear from you guys in public, if you take that back to them. I have seen those for a long time, maybe with that.
So happy to be here, Peter, and I don't know if you have any members online who was doing the hybrid meeting. Hi, it's on, so hi, Patton and Cynthia. All right.
Hi, Cynthia Ross.
Hello.
And after Paul. Are both on. So thank you for being there. So we are, because of that, we're also doing this show at Rutherford. So when we speak, I think it's really impossible, passing the mic. And everyone will have two minutes to share what they'd like to say, considering the ideas in front of you. So with that, I'm going to hand you the microphone, it's here, it's an unsuperioration.
All right. And we got, I probably didn't see that very well. And we can.
All right. And we can come on up. We go right here. Get with the wire.
Any materials I would sell are beautiful, telling. And I think that there's two very important things that community needs. The first thing that I think that our need needs is better parks and more parks. I feel like all these parks that we currently have aren't giving the parent funding that they need. I feel that there's a lot of trash. But not only that, but there's not a lot of seating, not a lot of grass. And there are a lot of things for families and children to enjoy. It seems like that this is like a lot of unsavory people to come by. People that are just bringing parts of these down, also concerning families. But I think we need to invest in more parks and bring more parts that we already have to. Implement things that anyone can enjoy, families, kids, especially nature. And yeah, even other adults, they love one, love nature, that's for anyone to do. Also, I think our neighborhood needs investing in more attractions. I think firstly, this would be good for, if we bring up our economy. I know for a fact that our outlook is meant to be worse. Tractions, slow the wheel, but that never got finished. And our outlook, I feel like, not bringing that home. People, this seems that it's usually very empty, there's not a lot of stores. Let me go with the word attraction. I also feel like that is not a lot for us to do in the community. That's coming from me and other people my age. I feel like that also means to a lot of people, to do things that are good for them, that are not for their health. That's why I keep that one track, the equal for the community, for our youth. And I think that our community really appreciates things like movie theaters, concerts, bowling alleys, all that, we really appreciate. Yeah, that's all.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, who do we have next? All right, let's bring up Samaya Hill. Samaya Hill.
I'm not disrespectful, I am finally. Okay, so I'm a little bit. But I don't think I'm going to be sad, I'm not going to feel so much. For a long time, I've been expressing that, that the government really doesn't help our community at all. The high drug rate and high population homelessness, from this increase of that of our population. I witnessed that police are trying to stop the same, when we black the hearts every day, doing nothing after it all. And we think the government may be good, so we'll be more efficient, so we're careful, I don't know. That would be better for the, well, better for the community. They think the mind of the heart is only that they're just going to look at their next part. Or it's that maybe if these people saw that somebody don't care about them in the park, and they're not so worried about the park itself. In the home, the people will have somebody, someone. I remember the shelter, I remember, okay, at least fully, though, if they're going to do it, they're going to do it, make sure, having a hiding, for hiding. It's unclear if they want to stop or not, but they saw that people weren't actively done enough, and they had a resource of each one. And they'll be able to. I also feel like losing that money is a nonprofit people, nonprofit people, so people can have somewhere to be. And losing that money to buy shelter, to build a stand-up, where in one way you don't have to buy it, the other, I think that's. Losing that money to allow you to have access to everything, anywhere they go. Probably any public that is going to have free pass, you can't want. Because we didn't give ourselves babies, but anyway. I wish we'd be able to work together, it's a lot to happen, because with all of these kinds of viruses, it's not safe for anybody. The same people walking around the same on the streets, running into that next person, without even intending to. Well, yeah, there's so much more, but I don't think we have a.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have. Channing Mitchell. Yes, there, come on.
I know, my name is Channing Mitchell, and this is the recent paper, I mean. Going to school, and you know, I wish there was more like, to bring certain groups offered for middle school, who want to do all ages and all grades. I'm seeing it now, kids, you know, going to some school or signing up for programs and not really helping them. Or if they're not able to access it because of where they live. So for sure, help them with their education and just help them in growth. I would think public funding would definitely help. And we can see them, they are next to you.
Next up, Paul, Paul Duffin.
Hi, everybody, my name is Paul Duffin, I'm here representing the Cleveland Foundation. We're based out of Park Hill. When I walk in here, the first thing I ask is, is Park Hill part of this? Because a lot of friends were not included in the conversation. Park Hill apartments are privately owned, and because they're not NICA, they're often left out of a lot of funding, funding and grant opportunities in the mayor's office. So that's one of the main things I wanted to address. I think that there needs to be a discussion about funding with communities that are not NICA. And people will look at what are the demographics like, what the demographics are. I know personally, Park Hill is changing drastically. And I know you can see that with the financial results, but really, there needs to be a conversation with the mayor's office about what we're funding in Staten Island. And how that looks, because just because we're not NICA, we don't have access to it first. And also, because of that, this advantage, because a lot of, a lot of funding we're not eligible for. We're not eligible for any grants that offer capital expenditure, things like that. The second thing I wanted to address was, the whole system of grants in general, through the mayor's office, is inequitable. And we're not able to get the funds in a way that makes it possible for us to provide services to our community. Because you apply for a grant, and you aren't going to see that set for at least six to nine months. And that is a problem, what they want to do is pay your receipts. And for a lot of these companies, nonprofits, who are really boot on the ground and don't have access to that kind of funding, that's pretty much impossible. Just doing a bus trip for our kids, and you know, close to ten thousand dollars. So for us to be able to fund that, and then try to reimburse ourselves, and that's, you know, the trip itself, let's talk about paying our employees. So I think there needs to be a really serious conversation in the mayor's office about what types of nonprofit we're funding, how we're funding them, what type of access they have to the funding. And it really needs to be. So that's.
Mara Fodero.
Okay, hi, evening. If I heard someone saying, if I'm putting that. I just started my phone, so yeah. Island and Gate, we'll be right off as it sits. We have a swimming pool that all the house has shared in this one. Our neighbor broke right cloud, the woman had to go talk to my parents. They care fully for matters. I'm lucky enough to live in a community that I'm raised with, and experienced. However, my mother and father wrote a document, and in working with Staten Island, I was the first candidate to vote with you. A lot of the events that take place are those that talk so hard, right across the street from our office, but everything goes on halfway. Our office is a welcoming place, large and charitable, while across the street, there are runs at its danger. In order to benefit, we have accomplished so far, we do effects of the part. We have run through the way, naturally, some families, as well as three dads, um, everything. However, this is not enough. I believe that the government can do a lot more to support believing the color, since they are the ones who have the funding to support and help them. Personally, if you're listening, talking so far, the local income for lots of stuff in town. Although we get in trouble, I think the government can help, I provide two meals in our head, who overdose the world, to the people. Many of those who leave are so addicted that they might care to go for a hit, so rather than knowing what they're doing, knowing they're not paying to provide them, it's difficult to be able to do so far. Additionally, to hold more fresh produce in the woods, I think, way I'm too far, yes, as I was. I understand that businesses can drive as well, so I recommend that those can afford it, it's for a local farmer. For example, on Saturday morning, you talk to the conveyor, so then you have farmer market, departmental. So using some, and seeing it starting to blow out. Instead, I believe, we're going to take maybe this, if I can, maybe this one. There are many other ways, probably, that neighborhood, but that's not one of the five.
Excellent. But we, we're flowing forward. Okay, Janelle Armstrong.
Good evening, my name is Janelle Armstrong, we are a registered health and safety foundation. And that's all the community, our, and our. I can probably everything that I've got, so five, so we can go to the community. And we identify with the, Park Hill community, the people, or, or we have, um, five, twenty. And we change the strategy, there's a lot of wanting to manage those things. But on the other side, the house, the people who play, who went over, with the summer, you know, to. We're in the university, it's, uh, you know, you have, that's a, so much. Uh, everyone's, if you find you can find, that's the company. Uh, it's not a public county, it's federal county. So we got a lot of, so we're going with the, that's what we do, so we do. Um, Ron, it's a rough, it's, I can't, I can't. And it really is.
And. Who's this girl?
Not that they could be here. So. I don't see.
Is this Al, Mike, or what?
The chairman, the chairman, yeah.
You want to?
Fixing the.
Next up, we have, yeah, no. I'm. Okay, I have to, I already said, we're going to go to the house, I think, here. In terms of, and what if you come in, and it's like, the room needs, I mean, I took it, you want to be open. And there's only one, the major that has been funded, who's got a home in the forest, who's got a half, there's a lot of things that we need to do. The issue is that we're all, we need each other, the resources are also in competition with each other. Instead of a lot of the things that are on, we see a lot of, we all, we see ourselves in competition, or fighting for money. And so what I think we need to build up, the mission has been more to be creative in terms of how it's making, who they're asking to do together. And really, these are resources that we have on this island, and sort of living in the island. So there might be, but we don't want to be so certain with same population. And it's like having to make sure that we're willing to be gap, and not to be able to that, um, the bird is there, being alive in. Or we're on time, we're burning, and I would consider it more accountable, and it would be very much more divided. But also, having, you understand, um, moving, not being burned, you know, right? And so I think that's really important, is figuring about, and really making sure that we're making of the services that you have to, not here on United. Possibly, we want to have a people worker, this is here. But in terms of, you are, you have two programs that are, it's not a different, it's others, like, you know, the actor, or the trainer, and you know. So with that, it's often not possible, not possible, we're working better, in terms of, of who we are, because if you're, you know, who's the person. Left, we're not going to tell them now, right? And so. So getting the, so a lot of different services that you might need, because the same person who might need employment, is also going, maybe need housing, is also doing to be food, and all these other different services. So how are we connecting those dots? And I think it's something that we should be investing in, and really to keep the planning. And then also, I see in terms of priority, you know, youth, seniors, and economic development, things like this. But I often see, especially with grants and RFPs, after you turn twenty-four, there's really no service for you, like, taking you down like a senior. So what happens to the twenty-four-year-old plus, right? Or you just automatically have it together? You automatically know exactly what you're doing in life, and you automatically are never going to change careers, or you automatically are not housing the rest of your life. It's just a serious gap there, in terms of millennials, in terms of older generations, that services are really focused on them, especially in this community. And so I think there's a need to revisit that, in terms of real workforce development that's needed for twenty-four plus. But also other services that might be needed, because you see a lot of millennials still living at home, sixteen millennials who are still scraping to make it by. And a lot of these millennials and older generations are leaving the island and leaving some of these ethnic neighborhoods, because they just can't afford to be here. And so how do we keep local talent here? And how do we provide services to those who fall without the category of contracts that are being struck right now? And so I think that those are two important things, in terms of really making a set, and really impacting. So I see you, I think we need to focus on the community development part. Thank you, touch. All right, next up, we have Jared, Jared Calum.
Yeah, I'm not too far in the south, so this might be really, this might be the radio, I'm not sure. But I know, for me, like, I'm on under Jersey Street area, and one of the things I see all the time, and there's a lot of cities out there that we do, get selling drugs for, doing. And I think, like, when we had Bobwell during the time, like, a place where these kids can go and watch, and play, and socialize, and work on all these skills, and great jobs in the community. So I think having another facility in low-income neighborhoods, where these kids can be watched, that, and work on social skills and jobs and stuff like that, year-round. It's good for the parents to rely on a lot of stuff that don't have time to really watch their kids, and keep an eye on them, with people they hang with, and what they're doing outside of the home. But I can have a facility in place, year-round, that can look after these kids, and give them a little hindsight, will broaden their horizons a little bit more. So these kids can get off the street, and, like, we put the drugs and stuff down, you know what I mean? So like, that doesn't really matter.
Can I call on Perry?
How you guys doing? My organization is Beautiful Heartbeat's Aim, and just to piggyback a little bit off of Jared saying, and also of what you say. There are a few of us that do work together, especially within the urban community. We're in the Brighton, where West Brighton, where Manis Harbor, where Park Hill, and we do work together. Brothers Care, Off the Chase Foundation, K. West Foundation, we do work a lot together. And we feed each other resources, but again, we have not a lot of resources out here that given to us, even as nonprofit organization. As far as grants and stuff, a lot of times, we're going GoFundMe, raise the money, there's not a lot of grants. Um, as far as grants and stuff, a lot of times we're going GoFundMe, um, raise the money, there's not a lot of grants. And if we do fill out these grants and stuff, you're getting denied or you're just not hearing back from them. So we're having a tough time as well. You know, we need more resources, we do need to come together more, you know, as far as volunteer and things of that sort. Again, you know, there is a few organizations that do work together and, um, you know, in the Brighton, we just did a food giveaway. We did food and alcohol giveaway thing to Amazon. Uh, we partnered with Amazon, we do a lot of, um, different giveaways in a different areas. Um, again, um, we did, did the very own, we try not to stay stationary in a one area. We do try to go to different areas to be able to give these resources as well. So again, um, again, to piggyback off of what you say, have more resources that can be given to us as well. You know, we come into these events, we come to these different, um, seminars and things of that sort. Again, enough resources given to us to be able to provide for the community. So a lot of things, we're working off of each other, you know, of each other or to win. You know, so again, more resources at, um, nonprofit organizations as well.
Very much. Um, can we have anyone else? We have Leah, Leah Cologne.
Um, so I was, I'm like, I can't get it to be bought out and I think I'm gonna. So I just like roll on stuff, next to the cap off. So, um, I feel like the community needs more rehab, because everybody's on drugs, on the action. And it's like, not everyone's strong, it's like somewhere to be first, and then some are given by doctors. Uh, it's not like we should be judging them for that. So I feel like they should be rehabbed, that would actually afford to. Um, there should be homeless shelters. That letting people help them, like, it's not that hard, it's still not. Um, I, I feel like what can we fix that with the attraction? Yeah, we should have them, but, um, without the gentrification, because that happens a lot in foreign neighborhoods. And unlike them, because it's not. I like the fresh food, because in obviously foreign neighborhoods, there are people who are poor, people, myself, who are eating things that are bad. And the one box of like, oh, with five boxes of crab and cheese is a dollar compared to like a box of macaroni, that's like three bucks. Then a block of cheese, that's like five, and then there's some that, like, it's a lot. So I feel like if there's fresh food that's affordable, that'd be great. And there'd be like. I can also be some problems, because. And I feel like child care, because there's a lot of parents who work nine or five, five days a week. Some have two jobs and decide, hey, you're making money from those deals go up, which makes no sense. Like, I was hoping to get out, but, um, I feel like they should be able to, like, have their kid watched by somebody, even if they, like, can't afford it, because they're very, very. It would be hard to be willing to do so, we should have a facility, not the only little kids or just kids to be all around. So, yeah, that's my thought.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else like to speak for the record? Anybody have some, someone online who wants to say something?
I didn't. Think I'm not.
While we find out, uh, what are some of the things that we need? Uh, again, my name is Kelly Dunne. I am, uh, Chair of the NAB, uh, Neighborhood Advisory Board. I'm also Head of Staten Island Urban Center. Um, welcoming you to this space, which we hope to, we just rented it for the summer. But, uh, yeah, let's do it, let's do it. Uh, so we're, we're, we're really trying to figure that out. But I, I think that, you know, the more voices that we hear from the community helps change these dark themes. I think you're absolutely right in front of, um, how funding comes down off Staten Island. Uh, you know, I'm head of organization, so I know the struggle intimately. And, and there's a lot of things that we need to be doing to get out there. You know, people need to see us outside of the island, they're the ones that control the money. The people inside the island don't necessarily control the monies. Um, so we need to do things that make us see outside, you know? Uh, it's great that you, like, we is here. Uh, you want to make sure you introduce yourself to them. Uh, there are people who have resources, there are no people who have resources. So it's always good for us to be in touch. Patiana, uh, brand new Executive Director of the Nonprofit Association, uh, of Staten Island. So it's, it's an organization that's bringing together nonprofits from around the borough. And one of my pet peeves about the organization in the past year was that it did not necessarily represent, uh, our community. And it didn't necessarily represent people of color. So I'm thrilled to see somebody who's been in the fight with us, uh, for the last couple of years, Patiana. Um, and having a, a, a person of color as Head of the Organization with the Plus. Uh, but more so having a person who thinks deeply about the community that she not only works in, but lives in. And, and cares about the things that we've been here. So I encourage all of us to view the Staten Island, uh, Nonprofit Association as another, another voice. It's not to be the only voice, but another voice for all of us to say that government is not, you know, giving us money. So, thank you. Uh, we have anybody online, do you want to share anything? Okay, we have anybody in the audience that wants to say a few words? Okay, we have pizza. And some drinks over there, if anybody want to grab some juice themselves, people can still submit their comments for it. Yeah, people can send email and leave your comments.
And where, where did you go?
If we can put that in the chat, so we can submit your comments. Oh, dog.
Hey, Charles, go ahead.
Yes, it's, it's very hard. I'm, I'm not really hearing, and the volume is very, very low. I'm trying to.
Wait, where's the mic? Can you tell them to start over?
No, it's, it's okay. I, I just wanted to, um, make a statement that there's so many, that there's so much land here on Staten Island. I, I see that a lot of the land is being usurped here on the North Shore. And I'm wondering if there can be a place where the young folks can gather together. Um, I had put it in the chat, um, sometimes for conflict resolution. Maybe they can get into the spoken word to be able to express themselves. Maybe, um, we can help assist and teach them legislative avenues where they can stand up and reach out and create demand and fight for their rights. Because they are our future. We do have some, uh, Green City Force activity on Staten Island, and I believe that that would be a good thing to encourage the youth to embrace. And especially in this time, the way things are going on at the supermarkets, we need to learn how to better ourselves for ourselves, to feed ourselves. There are so many different avenues that can be reached and need to be touched. But for some reason, Staten Island is consistently looked upon as the forgotten borough. And then the North Shore is also the forgotten area. That is my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. One of the things that you said was that we need a space where young people can come together, where we could be doing a variety of things, including spoken word. Um. Or we're in here. Yes, this would be a great space to collaborate with a lot of people on. Um, so that, you know, two things that we definitely need, that we need people to get involved with young people, you know, from everything from spoken word to, you know, other kinds of activities. Yes, please, come on up, Midi Grant.
Hi, good evening. My husband, I'm. Good evening, um, Lili Graham, I have a community-based organization in, uh, Park Hill. I also coordinate the Staten Island Black Heritage Family Day, which is Saturday, September seventeen. And Ray will be back this year, so please fly the streets of the Florida. This will be our eleventh year. Okay, so, everything that goes. And, uh, my issue is the community that I am located in is not NICA. We are a subsidized community of federal housing, okay? We have thirteen different buildings and four different owners. So when our community is looked at, because our buildings are privately owned, even by D Y C D. It's not considered a need. And we are, uh, we're not a project. As I said, we have owners who privately own, they get their subsidy from funds, low-income households. But we don't have a community center, we don't have. We think, hopefully, 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 excuse me, I, I, I'm thinking, okay, thank you, I appreciate that, I hope you do. I really do, I've been there for over thirty years, and that's why I've seen it happen, and I've seen it supposedly happen, and then I've seen it not happen. But even with the community center coming, hopefully, we still will need funding to, for programs in the center. Because the building is still going to be, the community center with one eighty-five and twenty-five, it's still privately owned property. So it, it's been an issue that we've had over and over and over and over again, and D Y, D Y C D does know about our community. But again, because we are not NICA, we do not get the same attention, and we have the same issues as any NICA housing. Um, it's public housing, any NICA public housing, we have the same issues in the park. So we really, really need for, just want people to understand if there's a need. You know, and that our youth are not getting served there, even currently, we're waiting on a center to build, hopefully. Well, we have organizations that are serving from now that are still competing for money, only receiving discretionary funding. Because when we serve a particular community like Park Hill, we have a need, it's so great. We don't have the numbers of a U A U or a, um. P A L, we don't have those numbers. But we are essential to that particular community. I've been in there since two thousand and seven, I was in here prior to that in nineteen eighty-nine. So I have really seen the needs of that community and over and over and over again, go before meetings like this. We go before other city activities, and talk about the need within the community and. We say, what happens? Because when the RFP comes out, I'm numbered, they're not enough, or they don't consider them enough, even though the need is so great to give us food. So therefore, our youth have to go to other communities, and which they don't, let's be frank about us that night, we are territorial. You're not going to get new Brighton to come to West Brighton, you're not going to get West Brighton, at least we haven't been able to. And hopefully, things will change. You're not going to get Park Hill to go to State Department, and he's right across the street. And when these issues aren't addressed, they're allowed to exist, they're allowed to fester. And then the problems don't change in the communities. For example, we have children from Park Hill that go to forty-nine. There's fights almost every afternoon on a walk home, kids from state, children from state, and I'm fighting children from Park Hill. So, you know, recognize that Staten Island is unique in its own, and that the issues that exist here are the same issues that are other places. But the cookie cutter approach, taking a program that might have worked in Brooklyn and trying to superimpose it on a program in Staten Island. It's, it's not beneficial, it's not beneficial to the communities that we're trying to serve, it's not beneficial to the youth, the parents, the families. And this is why our issues just seem to exacerbate and exacerbate and continue and continue. And it's very difficult to get to the root of the problem, because people are not listening to those of us that are out in the trenches and trying to tell you what our community needs. People are telling us what they think the community needs and not what the community is saying that they actually need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mini. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to say something? I think it's important, especially to have on record. You know, that's one of the most important things about Staten Island is that we don't have enough people, say, speaking up, speaking up. Uh, when there's opportunity, we don't have enough people applying, as much as we talk about that. There are also institutions where we don't have enough people applying for stuff. And sometimes it's that of, you just give up. And sometimes it's because we don't know about it. Uh, and sometimes, you know, if we don't know how, we don't have the resource to be able to do it. So whenever there's an opportunity for us to say anything, to put something on record, please, please do it, you know? So does anyone else would like to say something? Regret? So, yeah, I want to thank, uh, New York City Department of Youth Services, of Youth and Community Development. Uh, they have been around for, I'm trying to be a century. They've been around a long time and, uh, are always doing the background work, uh, for the city, trying to bring services, uh, to our community. Uh, so our partners here are, uh, both David and Anissa, one of you guys come up and let me do this out and tell us what you do.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you. Uh, my name is Annie Fantinetti, I'm the team director of the Neighborhood Advisory Board, Community Action, the lead of the unit. And all of David, I mean, hello, is the liaison to Staten Island, uh, NAB. Uh, we work with the federal, um, community, uh, blocking, community services blocking. Which is for anti-poverty, uh, funding to help people with services and, and programs that will alleviate the effect of, um, of poverty. So this is one very small program in the whole scope of New York City's, uh, budget and the federal budget. So, uh, but it does work, it's been around, uh, since nineteen sixty-four. And it is helping people to have a way of, and to get out of poverty. See, the problems that you're, that I'm hearing here tonight is that there are not enough organizations qualified to get the funding for this program and for other programs here, where the city. Um, we need more. And then your organizations that can provide the services that need in your, in your area. Uh, what D Y C D does, I know we have, um, a seminar that's called Building Wisdom. It is targeted to new and smaller organizations that don't get the funding right for this program, for the new services blocking and blocking. We have that seminar, it's usually in spring. It's all of you signed in and gave us your, uh, email, and we'll let you know when that seminar is happening. And you can invite every organization that you know to come to it. Where we'll be real information of how to get funding, how to work with the city, how to get funding over the city. The, the, the thing is that the city is, is, uh, their funding source is based on competition. I have to send in their proposals, it's read, uh, by our staff, it's read by, um, members. After what I do, they just go there, in the end, they're, they're neighborhood development. They talk to the proposal. And then the one with the highest score is the one that gets the, the program. But these public hearings are good, because you're telling us what we need and we. But these public hearings are good because you're telling us what's needed in your community. And that's a term of this program. We need to hear from the community. We have your community advisory board members that are vying for advice of the and what's needed in the community. So we hear you. We just need you to advocate a little bit more. And we need you to advocate with your elected official, so that you can get more hearing down there. And we will work with you for that. So I promise you that if you signed in there and you have your information, you will get notice of the building of this program that we have in the spring. Thank you. Ah, the gentleman that are here, so it's a gentleman and one lady left. These are our interns for the summer, the part of the summer unemployment program. This is Jimmy Junhow is there in the blue and pink shirt. And then we have Kevin Tang that's in the back with his hat. And Shara Sada, I stand up because he's little. Shara is with us too. They're with us uh this summer for the next two weeks. They'll be with us. And we're very happy to have them, which I think is really great work for us.
You should be while being employed.
Oh, yes. Also, we we hope. Um so they're all on their way, either on their way to college, re-colleges, and one more year of high school for Sarah. I'm very proud of her. Oh, it's really well said. Your maid is our technical leader. She helped us to have. She uh helps us to have this side of the um public hearing. And hopefully everybody will be here and be here and send in their comments and say thank you to us. So that that email again is M A B at D Y C D.
Your slowdown's a minute. Read it again.
M M B Neighborhood Advisory Board, NAB. At D Y C D dot N Y C dot G O V.
Thank you very much.
David is kind of new to us, uh just been brought on to work with us uh with the Neighborhood Advisory Board. He provides a lot of the the tech assistance. Do you wanna say a few words for me?
I'll be very, very agree. Everything, everything that Abby said was fantastic. I I actually just want to motion to basically the man. If you live in that manner, you can you can join the Neighborhood Advisory Board. We are always, we always welcome new members. We are al- we are always great, great meeting. If you wanted to come see me or 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 basically supervisor uh needed after after the meeting, we actually have a way to get you on the board and get involved, wanna get in involved in funding. And if you if I do all this, the best way to do that is join the working network. Oh, and also the last thing, please, please fill out the twenty twenty-two Community Needs Assessment. We have flyers here. They're they're on the Q R codes. You can take it online. You can take it right on your phone. Takes five minutes, I promise.
With one of our interns, they have the tablet and they'll have you fill it out. It takes about five minutes.
Takes takes five minutes.
And what that does is tells us also what's needed in this evening's campaign. And so everybody should take it. Uh Junhow and Kevin, you have the tablet. Let people fill out the the needs assessment. And you and just the last thing, you know, these needs assessments are real important. This is the foundation for what they use to create the R F B. So the more information we give them about what we believe or the things that are needed in our community, the closer the R F B is to the things that we want them to fund. So you can take them. There's a Q R code on there. Uh or you can go online and get it and share with other people so that they can also um have influence on how the process works. So is there anyone else who wants to speak before we close out? Jermaine, anybody on the on the? Now, I'm trying to look. Okay, let's let's take a quick look and then we'll see if anybody wrapping up. Yes, is that from Romell? No. Mark J. Yeah, so Mark J is the mayor's office in criminal justice. Uh there's the word that there's some funding that's being cut drastically uh that may affect some of our programming that has to do with um. It has to do with uh. With criminal justice, but not just criminal justice, with some of our prevention programs uh that are doing things like, I don't wanna name names because I don't know if they get funding from that, but you know, things that have to do with, you know, using terrible methods out there. You know, and with the police, with with the with the mayor and his message about how the state needs constantly, this is not the kind of funding that you can get. My opinion. So who wants to say that? But anyway, thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate uh you all being here tonight. There's still people in Minnesota. Minnie, you got questions?
Well, there's no, if I wanna talk to you with them, here's the question. Yes, D Y C D is a tier uh uh funding, the hottest thing I've ever heard. A tier problem, yes. Because all organizations don't change themselves. You know, you have smaller organizations, you might have a grant out and I wanna apply for it. But it may say that I have to serve this amount of people. I don't wanna serve that amount of people. I have a need. But if you had a tier system, where a a smaller organization like mine, maybe we don't wanna apply for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Maybe we only wanna apply for ten thousand dollars to run it, but you don't have a tier system. And uh Kelly mentioned it, the R F B process is burdensome. And I've said this over and over and over and over and over and over and over again. The R F B process is very burdensome, but in my opinion, it's to weed out smaller organizations and not giving the opportunity to have growth. I really believe that because no way can one individual who's attempting to write and complete one of those R F B processes. When you have to get linkage letters, when you have to go, you know, all over America, when you have to do things that virtually make it impossible for one person to complete that R F B process. If you had a tier system, that would help with capacity building for smaller organizations. I've said this at like five, you're not, you know, it's not for, I've said it like five other meetings. I say it every meeting that I go to. I say it every opportunity I get a chance to say it to anybody who's listening, in particular, D Y C D. If you had a tier funding process, that would help with capacity building for smaller organizations where the R F B process is not so burdensome. Thank you,吴佳. Thank you. And we're going with that's actually in the community and struggling. That are going to be we're in the community hands-on with these people. That used to be a possibility, but they had to locate a certain community to fund. I don't know what happened, but that 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 doesn't work like that anymore. We're out here. We're talking with people.
Absolutely.
Hands-on, direct services.
And then we next Sunday, perhaps the, if I specify today, if they put a letter together, email that. You know, each woman, each woman, Dave, you can put the letter together, you gotta learn this song together.
Absolutely.
We're putting, we're putting in for grants and stuff again, like you said, you're not meeting certain criteria.
You don't follow.
You don't follow that. Where opposed to they're giving it to, let's say, U A U or P A L or whatever it may be. Where we're actually hands-on with these people, create, you know, with with people in the community, create any services. And a lot of times out of pocket.
Correct.
Absolutely. So Minnie and I know. So thank you very much. You could raise points and I, you know, as a head of a small organization myself, uh definitely down to do a joint letter or whatever with anybody who wants to, you know, talk about some of the issues in in more seriousness and in a in a in a more intimate setting with D Y C D people. Uh and not just D Y C D people. It could be other organizations and other funders that we could be challenging. That's what we need to do, challenge others. They challenge us. We need to challenge them, you know, um to say you're not funding this part of Staten Island and people having this need. And it's so we can go on. We can talk.
But thank you. Contacting us to support the bill.
Thank you very much. Um I really appreciate uh everybody being here. Thank you, Peter, uh for being here. Sure, uh we've been wonderful help with this meeting and also our other members who are on online. And definitely want to thank and Cheryl is here. Thank you so much, Cheryl. There you go. Hi, Trishia and after our whole phone line. Thank you so much. Really appreciate you guys. And with that, we close out the NAB public hearing uh for NAB one, okay? Yeah, NAB one for Staten Island, number one, number one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.